Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular school committee meeting of May 28th, We have, for our roll call vote, Linda, we have two members missing, Mr. Mullis and Mrs. Burns. We're unable to be here tonight. Our next item of business is our reorganization. We actually were trying to reorganize when everyone was here, and at the last meeting, we couldn't have everybody here. So, we were going to reorganize tonight, and now we have two people missing instead of one. However, some things are waiting to be published and cannot wait for our next meeting, so we are going to reorganize even though there are only five of us here. So, I will step down for the moment, and Mrs. Benton will start the reorganization for us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask for nominations for Chair of the School Committee. The way this goes is we'll go alphabetically, and if you have someone you want to nominate, you nominate them. If not, you pass. Mr. Bork?
I'd like to nominate Peggy Kane.
Mrs. Barnish?
Peggy Kane.
Mrs. Brusad?
Peggy Kane.
Mrs. Carroll?
Peggy Kane.
Mrs. Kane?
Peggy Kane.
So, you know other nominations? All those in favor of Mrs. Kane? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I know recently, Mr. Kyra referred to me as the perennial chairperson of the school committee. I would like to thank my school committee members for their faith in me, and this is what you get when you retire. You're the only one available to be around during the day. So, but I really appreciate it. This is a wonderful school committee to be working with. Okay, so, our next item would be the Vice Chair. Mr. Bjork?
Jenny Barnish.
Okay. Mrs. Barnish?
Jenny Barnish.
Okay. Mrs. Brusad?
Jenny Barnish.
Mrs. Carroll?
Jenny Barnish.
And Mrs. Kane? Jenny Barnish.
We just can't seem to see eye to eye.
All those in favor of Mrs. Barnish? Okay, unanimous, Linda. Thank you. We'll switch places afterwards, okay? And, all right, the next person would be for Secretary. Mr. Bjork?
Julie Brusad.
See, the new person on the committee has alphabetically first person. Gets to do that.
I think that happened to me last year.
Yeah, I think it did. Mrs. Brusad. Okay, Mrs. Barnish?
Julie Brusad.
And Julie, Mrs. Brusad?
Julie Brusad.
Okay. Mrs. Carroll?
Julie Brusad.
And Mrs. Kane? Julie Brusad. All those in favor of Mrs. Brusad as Secretary? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Now, where would you all like to sit? Sit where you want. Jenny can come here.
To move now, or do you want to move later?
Yeah, we can move now, and then we'll get used to how we are. Do you like where you are?
Yeah, I know where I am.
Okay.
Because I'm right here.
Do you like where you are, Mr. Bjork?
I'm just fine where I am.
Oh, good.
Can I just say something?
Oh, please do.
I just want to acknowledge Kathleen Carroll, who was the Vice Chair last year and did a great job, and thank her for her service.
Thank you, Mrs. Carroll. Yes, absolutely. Okay, are we all set yet? All right, our next item of business is our warrant, the consent agenda.
We have nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Approval of the minutes in May 14th, regular session. Approval of the minutes in May 14th, executive session. Approval of the minutes, May 3rd, executive session. Approval of the minutes, May 8th, executive session. Acceptance of a gift from Cassett. We again were awarded a $10,000 grant for our Italian program. Approval of out-of-state field trip, London, England, April vacation, high school trip, and warrants G-415 and G-416, R-221, 222, L-41, 42, payroll, 521, and circuit breaker 12.
Good, thank you. Tonight, very interestingly enough, we can vote on all of them for consensus except for payroll. So, we'll do payroll first, and then the rest as a group. So, I entertain a motion for approval of the payroll warrant of 521. Mrs. Brusad?
I make a motion for approval of the payroll warrant for weekending May 21st, 2014.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Barnish? All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three in favor, and two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Thank you, Linda. And then, the rest of the items, the eight items on this consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the eight items that are left. Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Watch, already, I'm terrible. I'm sorry.
Wow, so moved.
Mrs., second, Mrs. Barnish. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. All right, that's the fastest one in ages.
Wow.
Thank you. And our next item of business is the Superintendent's Report.
It is my pleasure this evening to honor 21 staff members who will be retiring this year. Combined, 480 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. This is an amazing group of staff that have been here for, some have been here for a few years, some have been here for quite a long time. Long time meaning 49 years. It's a group that spans elementary through high school. It includes teachers, it includes central office, payroll, and it includes executive assistants. It's a group that I truly have loved working with and am thrilled to honor this evening. Before I introduce all of them, I'd just like to say to all of you, as you look back on your life's work, see all the good you have done, all the blessings you have been given and received, and then look forward to retirement as a reward of a job well done. You have all lavished your gifts on the Wilmington Public Schools. I've had the pleasure of getting to know each and every one of you over the past 10 years, and I can truly say that you have all left your mark on Wilmington. So, congratulations to all of you. I'd ask the school committee to line up there, and as I, I'm going to call one at a time. So, people, if you come up this way, that's all right. So, the first person we're going to honor is Sandra Acero, grade three teacher at Woburn Street School. 26 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools, all at the Woburn Street School. The next person we'd like to honor is Mr. Robert Apolloni, Principal of the Shawshine Elementary and Boutwell School. Oh, you can have your faces or your backsides. Mr. Apolloni has served as, Mr. Apolloni has served as the Principal of Shawshine Elementary and Boutwell School for 15 years. Next, Christine Bento, an educational assistant in the Wilmington Public Schools for 27 years at the Boutwell Early Childhood Center. Linda Brazil, grade one teacher, 17 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools at the Woburn Street School. Mr. Richard Kane, grade eight language arts teacher, 32 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. Before being a grade eight teacher at the middle school, he was an English teacher at the North and a middle school team leader for grade eight Explorer.
I was going to say to you.
You'll find someone.
I have to tell you, he single-handedly, in one year, in eighth grade, changed my daughter's writing into the writer that she is today.
It was ninth grade.
It was ninth grade, excuse me. Wonderful job. Thanks, Rick.
Business teacher Susan Canty, 10 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools, business technology. Middle school librarian Brenda Galvin, 22 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools at the Wilmington Middle School and at North Intermediate School. Next, Cynthia Jones, kindergarten teacher, 28 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools. She was a kindergarten teacher at the Boutwell, and before that, a kindergarten aide at Wildwood.
I'm sorry I have to tell all those stories. The one story I have to tell of Cynthia, she started in August every year, and she got her theme, and she did all of the work for her theme all over her floor. However, the best part, I would ask her what she was doing, and I would translate some of what she did into my ninth grade class, and the class loved it. And that's when I learned that high school teachers and middle school teachers can learn everything they need to know from the kindergarten.
Mary Lou Lackett, grade one teacher, 13 years of service, grade one teacher at the Woburn Street School, and before that, a grade three teacher at the Woburn Street School. Next, Mary Lou McManus, secretary at the high school, 32 years of service, starting out as a teacher aide, then secretary at the West, and then secretary at the high school. And I don't know what Linda's going to do without her. Next, Nancy Pizzardi, grade four teacher at the West Intermediate School, 17 years of service. Next, someone dear to our heart, Sandra Rockintendence, payroll specialist, 12 years of service as the payroll specialist for the Wilmington Public Schools. No one would ever get their checks if it weren't for Sandra. Now, there's one more retiree in the audience this evening who deserves special recognition. 49 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools, Mr. Richard Flady, science teacher, Explorer. I'm pleased to announce that the yearbook was dedicated to him along with Sumari, and he will be the, is the choice as the speaker at graduation. So well deserved. Did I miss anyone? No, I think I don't have anyone. I just would like to acknowledge if there were a few teachers who could not be here this evening. Judith Boggett, special ed teacher at the high school for 24 years. Wendy Benger, 11 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools as a North Intermediate teacher, and most recently, as a reading specialist. Barbara Crockett, 30 years of service to the Wilmington Public Schools as a special ed teacher at the middle school, Northwest, and High School. Lee Keating, ed assistant for 11 years at the Wilmington Middle School. I'm sorry he's not here, because I'd like to publicly thank him for his work, not as a teacher, but as the president of the Teachers' Association. Joe Kaponas, 31 years of service. I have worked with many presidents of unions, and it has been a pleasure to work with Joe Kaponas over the past seven years. We have had a collaboration, and I believe as a team, we've got a lot of work done. So, you will miss him. And Joanne Miles, reading specialist for 39 years at the Shawshine Elementary School. And last but not least, Jean Zwicker, special ed team chairperson, six years of service. So, that is 480 years of service from all of you, and our thanks.
We're going to be moving on with the meeting now, and you are welcome to stay, but absolutely.
But Kate's going to take a picture of them long near the door, so they can then go right out the door.
That'll be great. Thank you so much for coming tonight despite the hazardous parking conditions. We appreciate your getting here.
Thank you. Up to the table.
Mr. Mahoney, please join us.
Mrs. Barnish, as Chair of the Policy Subcommittee Committee, along with Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Burns and Mrs. Kane, worked on a new electronic devices policy, and also, Mrs. Peters. So, I'd like to ask Mr. Mahoney to touch on the changes.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me back. So, I present my fourth time presenting the handbook to you in the last four years, so it's getting a little bit more comfortable up here. Would you like me to jump right to the electronic device policy? Okay.
Yes, I think so. We have to see if we're approving that, I think, before we do the whole thing, yes.
Pages 30 and 31, I believe, will get us started.
We have it separate, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, is it a little different?
No, we got the right. We've had a number of, we've had multiple committees and groups work on this. A lot of people have had input, a lot of opinions on what should go in, what shouldn't go in, how we can utilize it in the school during the day. So, I think we've reached consensus through a number of different groups and bodies, which is a good thing. A lot of people feel satisfied and comfortable with this policy going forward, as it's been a work in progress for the past three or four years. One thing to remember is that it's not a cell phone policy. It's an electronic devices policy. So, you'll notice the changes in red, and we started off by discussing whether to have cell phones or not, have electronic devices or not, and should they be on, should they be silenced. So, during the school day, students may carry silenced electronic mobile devices on their person. The following list outlines what is considered to be the appropriate use of electronic devices at Wilmington High School. First bullet point is something that is from the existing policy. The second bullet point, we highlighted that students may only use their electronic devices during instructional time if it is approved by the classroom teacher. We wanted to put in that instructional time to make sure it was clear when students can use an electronic device and when it's expected for them to have it put away. The second part, instructional time includes classroom time, assemblies, or any other time which is monitored by a teacher. So, if there's a teacher present and a teacher feels that it's the appropriate use or the right time to use an electronic device, we want to put that power in the teacher's hands to be able to make that decision, manage their area, their time. The third bullet point, we speak about unauthorized use. Disruptive manner in the school environment is expressly prohibited. Anything that's in the school environment, if it is disrupting learning, if it's disrupting somebody's comfort level, we want to make sure that that is addressed. This includes the use of recording video camera features on a cell phone or any electronic mobile device. So, it's not just texting. It's not just talking on the phone. It's not just Instagram. It's any real use that could be disruptive or destructive if done incorrectly. Students found engaging in any use, any electronic device in an unauthorized area or in an unauthorized time for any reason, or found sharing or having shared inappropriate materials via phones, emails, social media, or other electronic means, will be subject to the following disciplinary action. This larger section, it gets into the kind of the meat of the matter of what we're going to do as we've evolved this policy. The first offense, the device is confiscated by the administrator and retrieved at the end of the day by the student. We really wanted to keep that so that we had a moment to discuss with the student, right from wrong, have them take ownership of their choices, and have it, at least at the high school level, have them, give them an opportunity to grow from it on their own. Second offense, students will turn in the device to the assistant principal, and a parent must retrieve the device at the end of the school day. So, we will hold on to the device until the end of the school day and have the parent come and pick the device up. And there, we'll have a discussion, again, with the student and the parent about their use or inappropriate use of the electronic device. Additionally, the student must turn in the device each day at the start of the school day for the period of five days. Students may pick up the device at the end of each school day. Something that I've instituted this year at the high school, just recently. I've had a number of students turning in their phones to me every morning and picking it up at the end of every day. And while they don't really enjoy it, it has created a moment for us to sort of address the morning, say, you know, how are you doing? What's going on? What's your plan today? Are you going to be focused? Are you going to do your work? We sort of have a mantra, but that's between the students and myself, about how they'll be successful for the day. And at the end of the day, it gives us an opportunity to say, how was your day? Because we know that they're not doing anything inappropriate on their cell phones or electronic devices. We know that they're not distracted by it. So, we're able to talk about something positive each day. So far, so good. I have three students who have been turning in their devices every day for the past two weeks. So, that's the second offense. Subsequent offenses, students will turn in device to the assistant principal, and a parent must retrieve the device at the end of school day, and then we'll be holding on to the device for up to a period of 10 school days. So, we're adding, not just a week, but we're adding two weeks, and we can grow from there as well, depending on whether the offenses will accumulate or not. We go into the law a little bit. Any student who uses an electronic device in an unlawful manner or who unlawfully shares inappropriate materials via phones, emails, social media, or other electronic means may be subject to severe disciplinary action, including, but not limited to, 10 days out-of-school suspension, daily confiscation of electronic devices for the remainder of the school year, and/or any other disciplinary action as deemed appropriate by school administration.
I just want to comment on that. This is the result. If you recall, back earlier in the year, we had a couple of incidents of students inappropriately posting on Twitter, and we really had no way of disciplining those students, because there was nothing in our policy that covered that. So, this will address that. What I like about this whole process is that Linda and Dennis had a committee, the teachers work with them on the policy, and I think that this will deter students or have them think twice before they do something inappropriate with it.
Could I just ask, you know, the new law, the state law you had told us about the 10 days, and you have to be very careful about sending kids out of school for 10 days? Does this overlap that, or does it, is it affected by that at all?
No, not this, this one is not.
37H in big quarters?
Yeah.
That's.
I mean, well, it will.
It could affect it.
Yeah.
So, it gives us, this still gives us the opportunity of, are we going to use 10 days or up to 10 days? There's certainly a bit of discretion involved in our part.
Okay.
Attorney Andrew Juarez coming to the next meeting to do a presentation on that, and that piece of language, we'll have to go into all the handbooks, but yes, it will change the way we do business. I was thinking of the 10 days that they held on to them. I'm sorry.
Right, okay. But it's still worth it to have it in here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Though the change is going to be that if we, if they're out 10 days, we have to provide.
Work for them.
Education.
Okay. Mrs. Carroll?
I really like having them report to you every day and keeping their devices there for five or 10 days, for, you know, first offense, second offense, or any other. I like that. I think that, you know, that makes me feel a lot more comfortable with having the devices in school, knowing that, you know, they will get taken away if they see it, you know. So, thank you for putting that in.
So, how is that monitored? Like, so, if they're, if it's a five-day offense, you know, the first day, you take it away and they have to pick it up, but do they just bring it to you the next morning, or what if they don't? Do you go get them?
It's an excellent question. Over the course of working with these three students, the first day, I had to go find them. And we had another discussion about what the consequences would be if they didn't fix it the next day. I confiscated the device that day. I reminded them on their way out the door that afternoon, and it has fixed it for the most part. Some days, they're forgetful, but it's something that I think Chris Phillips, the other assistant principal, and myself are pretty attuned to who's doing what, when, where, and it's something we want to monitor on our own, because we think it's a valuable tool.
Okay.
So, it's as simple as a yellow sticky on my, on my desktop some days.
I mean, that's, I like, I like this, too. I also wanted to know, how is this communicated to the students? So, is it, it's obviously not just in the handbook, because otherwise the kids probably wouldn't read it. So, since this is new, have you pulled, you know, told them all? How have you told them what this is?
So, we haven't used this at all yet, because this hasn't been voted on or put into the handbook.
Oh, okay, all right.
For the, for the students that I've been working with as a bit of a pilot program, it was communicated to them directly. Their parents were, I've called their parents on the phone. I had the student repeat back to the parents on the phone what the expectations were, and in the case that they might have forgotten the expectations, the next day, they called their parents again.
And then, so, for next year, when and if this is approved, will you, will this be something separate that you will tell them rather than just including it in the?
Yes. We have, we have class meetings at the beginning of every year, so we address the classes, freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior separately, and we go over all the good stuff, and then we go over some of the new expectations as well, some of the reminders of what's, what they need to do for that year for success.
Okay, and then I just have one other question. So, just at the beginning, this was already in there, but I just have a question. So, students may use cell phones or electronic devices during instructional time if it is approved by the classroom teacher. Is that something that is a blanket approval by the teacher, like at the beginning of the year, they say, you guys can use cell phones for this, or is this a daily thing where they say, okay, now you can take out your cell phones and do this? Like, how is that generally done?
Each teacher has been instructed, and we've requested, that they put in their syllabus their cellphone expectations.
Okay.
Some teachers don't want to have cell phones at all in their classrooms. Some teachers use them every day as an instructional tool. So, that expectation is left up to the teacher in their classroom.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be said every day you can use. It can be at the beginning of the year. This is how we use.
Yes.
I was just wondering about that. Thank you.
Sure. I would just like to say that I was one of the people who voted against this originally, and you've taken, you've turned Mrs. Carroll around, and you actually have turned me around. I just am curious as to whether the teachers find it worthwhile. Is it worth going through everything you go through to have these in school?
That's a good question. I think you have to ask teachers them specifically. Each teacher is certainly, there's a large contingent who appreciate having the ability and control in their classroom to use the cell phones as, or electronic devices as instructional tools. There are also members of our staff that don't want to use them at all and don't appreciate that kids are so nonchalant about having them and having them out. But we work with every teacher, whether to support having this, having the electronic device, or to support taking them away when the kids have them out, you know, inappropriately. or to support taking them away when the kids have them out, you know, inappropriately. So it really depends teacher to teacher.
Thank you. Do we need to vote separately on this, right? All right, any other questions? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept this cellphone policy, revision of policy for electronic devices. Mrs. Bonish?
I'll make a motion to approve this revision of policy for electronic devices at the high school.
Okay, we have a second. Mrs. Brusad, are those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda?
Since they're up there, why don't we just continue with the student handbook? There's very few changes in the high school handbook. And both handbooks, actually all handbooks will have new language around the new law after Andy does his presentation.
Does anyone have any questions on that?
I just want to acknowledge some.
What's he going to go through?
The first new change, which is on the inside page, and she's sitting in the audience, our new superintendent, Mary Delight. Welcome. And we will change the offices under school committee members. Yeah, academic information.
This is currently under construction. In years past, it's been put together in pretty much airtight. We had a number of people, actually parents and teachers, come to us and say they'd like to rework the formatting of the handbook. And it's a fantastic idea. It does need reworking because it doesn't look great when you print it out or when it's online. However, it's a very, very large task. It's a little bit more cumbersome than people realize. Once you decide, you know, should this, should this section go here? Should it go there? Should we add this first? And what should the wording be? And then all of a sudden, it takes a long time. So it is under construction, but it will be done very, very soon.
So the content will not change once you vote it, but the format will?
Correct. So the, as with anything, the red highlights are what will be the changes for next year. Page three, the principal's message. Our new principal has a new message. So it's a nice little addition.
It's a very nice message.
Page 10, we're still working on our community service, something that, as an assistant principal, we hold near and dear to our hearts there. Students are doing a great job and it is becoming part of our culture. Students, I already have about 40 freshmen that have turned in their community service ahead of schedule.
Wow.
So it is definitely something that has seeped into our culture through an expectation and students really do appreciate it. But like with anything, as we, as we keep going year after year, we need to make some changes and updates to define what it is that we're expecting. Some changes are that we are reminding students that they need, they really need to have anything pre-approved if it's not coming from our community service program, which is found on our website. If the preapproval is simply just coming to one of the assistant principals or any administrator and asking whether you think this is a good idea or not. All community service should be carefully planned and pre-planned and organized. It's not something you just do on a whim because you do want to think about what you're doing so you can appreciate the work and enjoy it. And you know that you're helping other people. Babysitting or pet service sitting of any kind is not considered community service. We have a number of fantastic siblings and, you know, brothers and sisters that are taking care of their younger ones at home. That's great, but that's being a good family member. That's not serving the community. So we've had that discussion a few times in the past few years. Also, helping a neighbor or family friend. We want you to help your neighbors. We want you to, we want you to take care of a senior citizen that lives in the neighborhood. But we want to know about it ahead of time so we can call ahead and talk to the person and make sure you're doing the right thing, you're safe. A lot of our little stipulations with the community service is to make sure that you're safe and you're not going door-to-door shoveling or, you know, you're doing something for the school where you could get hurt. We don't want that to happen. So we threw in the babysitting, pet sitting, and making sure that if you're going to help a neighbor, we want to know about it ahead of time. We'll more than likely approve it. Anybody have any questions? So the update for electronics devices will be on page 30 to 31. Page 35 will be where we will add our section 37 H and three quarters and H-dash-E, I believe it is. We'll be throwing in that language as well. Page 42, we are working on our tobacco policy. The tobacco policy is not changing at all, but we have seen a small bump in electronic smoking devices of various types. They're not, it's not an epidemic, it's not a major issue, but they have popped up here and there, so we'd like to address it and get ahead of the curve.
What is that?
So electronic cigarettes should not be sold to anybody under the age of 18. Some of them contain nicotine, some of them don't. Some of them are just water, but they all glamorize smoking. Some of them are electronic hookahs, which was an argument we had this year. Some of them are electronic cigarettes or smoking devices. So we're trying to make a blanket statement that this is not allowed at all. I mean, it's certainly a gateway to something. And you, more than often, you're not old enough to be in possession of one anyway in the high school level. We certainly have plenty of 18-year-olds, but...
I've never heard of it.
They're sold at a lot of the convenience stores around town. So...
The idea behind it is to help cessation of smoking, to help stop smoking. But the kids are picking it up apparently.
They are picking it up. And they are, they are an electronic device, they do need to be recharged. So we wanted to make a blanket statement. A possession of smoking-related paraphernalia will result in a one-day in-school suspension, as it has in the past. And smoking-related paraphernalia will include, but is not limited to, cigarette lighters, matches, cigarette holders, tobacco pipes, packages, cigarette papers, and electronic smoking devices of any kind. Because we've had electronic cigarettes, we've had electronic hookahs, we've had electronic devices.
I just had one suggestion. Instead of calling it a tobacco policy because all these other things are in hand now to call it like tobacco slash smoking policy? Because an e-cigarette doesn't have tobacco and, you know, it might just be... I don't think it's relevant.
Some of them have none.
Some of them just paper.
Many of them have a little bit of nicotine, but no tobacco.
Oh, okay, all right. Just a suggestion.
Do you need to vote on it? I believe it is a school committee policy. Perfectly happy to put that in.
Just put it in.
Okay.
I'll move this along. And that's it, right?
That's it for the heavy stuff, sure.
You have one more.
Page 49, we added just some of our more recent clubs that have come around. Peer mentoring, which has been a fantastic, fantastic club for our seniors to get involved with our freshmen as they come in. It's been really working out well, form relationships and communicate what the expectations are. And also our best buddies club, that's working with our life skills kids. We've had a number of students volunteering to work with those students. And it's been great to see the benefits and the relationships that they build.
I love that.
And last would be in the appendix is an update about the asbestos report.
And page 17, the lunch prices have gone up.
The lunch prices are going up.
Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five.
Paula's milk on up? Thank you.
All right, so we're there. Is anyone ready to vote, able to vote on this? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington High School Student Parent Handbook for 2014-2015.
So moved.
Mr. Wolf, second, Mrs. Carroll. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda?
Thank you, nice work.
Thank you very much.
I just want to point out, we've got an interesting dilemma. The high school address right now is 159 Church Street. The new high school is on the other side of the Roman House. The Roman House is 161 Church Street. So I actually have to talk to the post office about what they want to do. I mean, ideally, we'd like to leave it and, since Wilmington has such a crazy setup for numbers on streets right now. I mean, you have even odds next to each other in some streets, having done the bus routes for many years. So I think it would make the most sense, but the post office will be the final decision maker on that.
Probably have to move the Roman House.
I'm not touching that with a ten-foot pole. Thank you, Linda and Dennis.
Yeah, thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, McMenon.
Let me go back here. Student handbook, oh yeah, Mrs. McMenon. Thank you. I love as we go along, the changes are getting fewer and fewer. This is really, really tightening up on these handbooks. Oh, that's a good word, yes. Thanks, Mrs. McMenon.
I can talk similarly about the changes, mostly minor and updates from staffing lists, two calendars, both the district calendar and the academic calendar, those you would see at the beginning of the handbook in your copy with the changes. I can tell you that on page 14 and page 17, we have some updated language with regard to homeschool communication and our midterm progress reports with regard to the Aspen Family Portal. I believe I've heard many comments, very positive from parents as well as teachers, about that homeschool communication. So the handbook now reflects that Aspen is a part of our daily culture at the middle school and actually district-wide. So those updates are there. Also, we have, we very much communicate with the high school, Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Peters, myself and Mr. Sheehan, keeping things very consistent in the handbooks. So the language that will come on board in consultation with the attorney, Andy Waugh, for the chapter 37 H and three quarters, that will be mirrored from the high school handbook. Also, we have a bit of an update as well. There was some language in there under the substance abuse policy about students needing some court involvement perhaps if they were needing assistance. And that was called a CHINS, a child in need of services. And now there's been a changeover with the state and the court system to call it a child requiring assistance, a CRA. So we just updated that language for any parents looking for resources and support through that area. Also, when I talked about the mirroring of the language, whatever we do with regard to that tobacco policy or the tobacco slash substance, and we would, we would have the same language, including the e-cigarettes and the hookah pens. We have not had many issues with them either. However, they do pop up from time to time and we want to make sure that we're consistent and that we're incorporating all of those devices. One of the major changes is some additional language that we worked with the policy subcommittee on with regard to our eighth-grade field trip toward the end of the book on page 70. We have some language in there that really states some of the updates that, yes, of course, if students cannot conduct themselves with proper behavior throughout the school year, they may not be included into their activities. But in addition, when we present the Washington DC trip next fall, we will include a student contract, an academic and behavior contract, so the students understand their expectations and the responsibilities for attending and being eligible for the trip. So that language is updated. And actually, at the end of the handbook, I had passed this along to Mrs. Benton today, we will actually include the contract as one of the appendix pieces, similar to some of the other policies. So it'll actually be a page so that parents can view it, students can view it. But the assembly, when they present the trip, it will be handed to each and every student and then collected, signed by each and every student so they fully understand their responsibilities for the trip.
That's wonderful, Moos. Thank you, Mrs. McMenon. Mrs. McMenon?
Those are the major changes and the small updates.
Oh, yeah. Eighth grade dance, interesting, and the D dance?
That usually comes up each year traditionally, the night before the last day of school. And sometimes it does get changed. We put in a tentative date, but then depending on snow days, we kind of bump it toward the end of the year and it's their last night celebration as a class.
Nice, that's nice.
There's a Hawaiian theme this year, just in case you wanted to know.
That sounds lovely.
That was voted by the student council. I don't know, we'll have to have a couple of luau-type effect props. But the eighth graders are very excited.
Yeah, that's excellent. So it's that Tuesday night, do they go, is their trip the week before?
The week bef, uh, two weeks before because of all the snow.
Oh.
So we go to Washington DC, June 3rd through June 6th, Tuesday through Friday, coming up next week. And the dance is on the 17th, which is the night before school ends.
Nice, okay. Great, do we have any, any questions or comments? Very nice, thank you. I entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Middle School Student Parent Handbook for 2014-2015.
So moved.
Mr. Wolf, you have a second? Mrs. Bonish, are those in favor? Unanimous, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for...
Thanks, Christine.
Going over this with us.
Thank you.
Let me see, our next...
Excuse me?
We forgot to check her lunch prices. Like the high school.
Middle school lunch prices are going to be updated as well. The lunch prices?
The lunch prices?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, copy paper bid?
As a result of a request for copy paper bids for the 2014-15 school year, Wilmington received bids from two vendors, WB Mason and Contract Paper Group. Mr. Agiero is recommending that WB Mason be awarded the paper bid for 2014-2015 school year, and we need a vote on that.
I will entertain a motion to accept the bid of WB Mason for, just for the paper? A paper bid for the 2014-2015 school year. Mrs. Carroll? So moved. Okay, thank you. Second, Mrs. Brusad. Are those in favor? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. Okay. All right, our next item of business is school committee assignments. We have a number of subcommittees. And as of now, we, while we don't have the other two, our other two people with us, we're going to keep them where they are for now. And if they want to change, we'll do it at the next meeting. But our policy subcommittee will be MJ Burns, Ginny Bonish, and Steve Bajorc. The, yeah, president, the president. Chairperson for that subcommittee will be Mrs. Bonish. Sick Bank Subcommittee, myself and Mr. Mullis. The Technology Task Force, what we're going to do on a couple of them, oh, the policy and the Technology Task Force, because of when they are, they're held, we're going to place an alternate on both of those subcommittees so that we can, we'll always have the full number of school committee members. So on the Technology Task Force would be Ginny Bonish, Julie Brusad, and Manny Mullis, with the alternate being Steve Bajorc. On the Policy Subcommittee, the alternate is going to be Kathleen Carroll. Our school committee representative to the Wilmington Educational Foundation Board of Directors is, would be Kathleen Carroll and Julie Brusad? Okay. School committee representative to the School Health Advisory Committee, Kathleen Carroll. Okay, school committee representative to the CPAC, which is the Special Ed PAC, would be myself, Margaret Kane. By law, I'm in charge of executive session minutes, so I'm under that one. The school committee, high school building committee, is Mrs. Bonish and myself. The legislative representative is MJ Burns. And the school committee negotiations Subcommittee for Cafeteria Workers, we got someone new to help us with that too. So Mr. Bajorc said he would be able to help us and myself. So the only negotiations we're doing right now are with the cafeteria workers. Would any be coming up? Not the rest of school year?
Yeah, we have a date, June 3rd, is it? We already met once, 4th.
No other unions this school year?
No, I mean, any other unions, no, no. Okay. All right, so that would be, those would be all the subcommittees this time. Thank you all for volunteering to be on those. Next item is public comment. Hello? Thank you. Other reports, I think at this point, do we have? Mrs. Carroll?
So WEF had the Red Sox...
So WEF had the Red Sox trophy in at the middle school the Friday before Memorial Day, and we did really good. We raised money and it went very well. And it was done, slowed down probably 10 of 5 and we were out in time and everybody enjoyed it, came in the car, the Red Sox car, and it was great. Thank you. Thank you for the public to come out and donate.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, let me see, correspondence. Mr. Bajorc, you'll have to start writing us some letters because we don't get a lot.
Fair enough.
That's what the new person member has to do now.
Letters and complaint?
Only letters of good work. Okay. Our future meeting dates and agenda items, on June 11th, we will be having Attorney Andrew Waugh to present on school disciplinary law and a discussion on the Park versus MCAS. The school committee has to make a decision on whether our community will use the Park or the MCAS just for next year? Is the vote just for next year?
Right now it is, just for next year.
Right now, okay. So we're going to be getting some information. We've been getting information. Whenever we see anything, we're trying to share it with one another so that we can make an informed decision. And Mrs. Benton has graciously asked Mr. Delai to come that night so that she can be part of the decision because she will be not stuck with the decision, but the decision will be in her hands. So we'll be glad to see you at the next meeting.
Just want to point out, actually, we're meeting on Monday, Kate and Neil and Mary and I, to discuss it. But the MASCE just came out today about an hour ago with their opinion, which reflects what we heard last week in Marlboro, that the school committee does get to make the decision. So I know that that was something that has been based on the recommendation of the new superintendent, so...
I love it. Well, at least now...
We had heard that last week from Mike Long, the lawyer for the MASCE, had announced that. And Tom Scott just sent us an email about an hour ago saying that you all just received one from Steve Finnegan saying the same thing.
Oh, okay. It's in your email. All right. Well, it's interesting, so now we all know our roles in this. That'll be an interesting meeting. And we will take the vote that night?
Yes, because we have to get it in before June 30th. I have the passwords to ask them.
And it will be somebody's last meeting because that's the last meeting we'll be meeting in for this year. So just let us know. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Prusad?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a good week.